Adjustment to order. Rope, roll call please, Rob. Scott?
Okay, in attendance tonight we have Counselor Eric Hoffman, we have the Honorable Richard Boddy, Mike Delavecchia, and Marcia Hayward, staff in attendance, Rob Delavecchia, and myself, Scott Pelchat. Absent from tonight's meeting, Jane LaRoche, Roland Nahue, Mike Foot.
Alrighty.
So we don't have a full board?
I have to, it's four members, so anybody has business tonight, I just have to tell you, if it's a two to two vote, it's automatic no. So, you have the option of coming back next month when we have five members, or go ahead with your presentation tonight. I just have to state that before we start. First up, Blueberry Lane is postponed, am I correct on that one?
No.
No, they're here.
I'm sorry.
And Mike Minutes?
I got mixed up with Gerard and Morris, and now I have Blueberry Lane.
We, you're gonna do-
Blueberry Lane here tonight.
Minutes.
You're gonna do the minutes first.
Oh. Review of the minutes from last meeting? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes as written?
Thank you. I need a second.
I wasn't here last month.
But you reviewed the minutes.
I did. Motion to second.
Thank you. All in favor? Alrighty. Eric, you're supposed to raise your hand.
I wasn't here, so I abstained.
You can still review the minutes. Anyhow, minutes are in the record, and first up we have, Blueberry Lane is seeking a variance for residential density, to change from a multifamily to use a multifamily which is once a commercial enterprise. Blueberry Lane here?
Yes.
Yes.
Please come up and state your name, please.
Attorney Kyle Amell, Westcott Law, on behalf of Promon LLC, which is the owner of this lot. So this is a lot at thirty-five Blueberry Lane, tax map three ninety-four dash three thirty-six dash fifteen. It is currently zoned as residential single family. We have a two point four acre lot here. Present with me tonight are Minish Aurora and Praveen Talam, who are members of Promon LLC. Here tonight we are asking for a variance on two specific Laconia zoning ordinance, namely, section two thirty-five dash two eight, to change the use from a residential single family lot to a residential apartment lot, and also section two thirty-five dash three-three, speaking to density, to allow nine units per acre. So that would allow a max twenty-one units on this lot. So the proposal, so currently this is, as I stated, a single family residential lot, where multifamily use is not permitted. Therefore, the units per acre requirement is not applicable. It's currently a conference center, which is sparingly used. The proposal was to change it to a residential apartment zone, which would allow for multifamily use. So we requested variance that would allow for the development of a twenty-one unit multifamily apartment complex. So as I walk through the variance criteria, number one, this would not be contrary to the public interest here. So for that factor, we have to look at the essential characteristics of the neighborhood. Right now, if you look at this lot, it's in a neighborhood that already has residential apartment zones, as well as residential single family lots. In fact, just to the east of this lot is a residential single family cluster of lots, and just to the east is a large apartment complex run by the Laconia Housing Authority. So adding this lot as a residential apartment actually benefit the, the public interest by providing much-needed housing in the area. Two, in terms of the spirit of the ordinance, so these specific provisions really seek to, for the orderly, orderly development of the community. The proposed use is really just an expansion of what's already there in the neighborhood, that being multifamily apartment units. So this isn't a unicorn project, we're not trying to, for example, build like a hockey rink in the middle of a residential community. It's just a, an apartment complex next door to an apartment complex. And the proposed use and density actually coincide exactly with the apartment complex next door. So third factor, substantial justice, that's where you need to weigh the individual loss to the property owner by denial to any benefit gained by the denial to the public. So here, now, I argue that there is no public gain by denial. In fact, the proposal would alleviate shortage of housing in the area and be a net positive for Laconia. Also, denial of variance would restrict the owner, the current configuration is simply not profitable, and currently it's, really it's not set up to be a single family residential lot. Factor four, so values of surrounding properties not being diminished. It is our position that this development actually enhance the value of property in the area by making the neighborhood more desirable. It would, and transform and really underutilized law into a high-quality housing development. Can look no further than eight oh eight Weers Boulevard, which my clients were involved in, which transformed the lazy, lazy E motor end into a high-quality condo complex. Finally, the last criteria being literal enforcement of the ordinance resulting in an unnecessary hardship. That's where you look at the uniqueness of the lot. So this is a unique parcel, so we have a relatively large, basically almost all undeveloped law in the middle of a residential apartment neighborhood that's currently used as a conference center. So the current conference center in a residential single family lot severely restricts its use. So there's no, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance, that being the orderly use of the property and its specific application here. The lot simply isn't used as a single family lot. It's underutilized and at risk of becoming an eyesore in its current configuration. Currently, it's essentially a big parking lot, so, I mean, you can use your imagination of what can go on there. But, second, this is a reasonable use, so we're looking to develop twenty-one high-quality housing units, and I would argue that's a better use of the space, and it conforms to what's already in the neighborhood. So with that, I'd be happy to either have me or my client answer any questions.
I have a question for Rob, is they're asking for nine units per acre, what's allowed in a multifamily?
So, i- if we're talking about the residential apartment district, it is nine units per acre as their density allowance.
So we would be changing the zoning to that district?
No, we're not changing, we're not doing any district change, this is them requesting a variance for the density. As in, we don't specify density in residential single family, all is allowed as a single family. And changing the, the use to multifamily.
Very good. Alrighty. Is it, Kyle is your first name?
Correct.
I forgot your last name, I'm sorry.
It's Amell, A-M as in Mary, E-L-L.
Or members have any questions for Attorney Amell? Okay, I'll ask, you have a seat, please, Kyle, and I'll ask if there's any members from the public like to speak for or against this application? Nobody wants to come up? All these people.
We did have that one letter.
I'll read the letter from Stacy and Douglas Sarice. She's in a butter in regards to thirty-five Blueberry Lane, and she's objection to proposed variance because the application in Kansas Ferry would be allowed as it aligns with existing character of neighborhood, which includes multifamily dwellings of ten abutters, only two have multifamily dwellings. The size of the lot in question does not support the number for the humans proposed. The amount of green space proposed is not nearly enough for a large number of units. The proposal shows one half of the proposed units would directly abut the Pearly Pond Conservation Area, allowing the variance from allowed use would likely give a negative impact on the wildlife habitats in the Pearly Pond area. Signed, Stacy and Douglas Sarice. Only two abutters are the apartment complex in that lot, that's, that's correct, because they're up against-
Yeah, well, there's the-
Are we speaking amongst the board now? Yes? Okay.
Yep, there's, they abut the Eversource easement. Uh, there's the two known abutters directly across Blueberry Lane, and then there's Main Street that abut that property.
Okay. I was out there, and they kinda like get free green space from the overhead lines. It's, I don't know if they own that property, or the abutting property owns the-
So I think that Eversource easement is actually on the abutting property.
But it's, that's correct. It becomes unused property, so it kinda adds to their green space. How much green space variance are we asking for here? I thought they had enough-
They're not asking for a green space variance.
Right. So, but the, the question from the, the writer mentioned that they don't have enough green space, so, but they do.
Well, planning, planning would pick up on all that anyway.
That, that would be part of their site plan review process when they went through with the formal submission, if they, if they were to get to that point.
Alrighty.
I have a couple of questions. I don't have any paperwork that gives the person who made the presentation the authority to speak on behalf of the owners. Do you have something?
Scott, do you have a letter from the attorney?
I didn't have that in my packet. Just wanted to make sure that that was in place. Question number two, Director, do you-
Yes.
No?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough then, okay, good, that wasn't in mind. Do you know if there's an issue relative to this type of construction next to, or right alongside an Eversource easement? Do you know of any issue that would come up relative, on the city side?
Um, no, um, the, the same, a very similar project happened on Province Street, where there was three larger structures that were built right next to an Eversource easement.
No issue, okay.
No issues.
Fair enough then, and, uh, that's all we have? I, my opinion, I like the use of the property, it's consistent with the, the local area, for sure. Drove through there, and there's, it's all multifamily everywhere along the way. And I agree with their estimation that it's a unique property that really has no other use, has short, short road frontage. And so I'm, I'm in favor of the, of the variance.
Very good.
Are you closing the public portion of this meeting before we have a discussion as board, because-
Well, nobody came up, so-
I, I know, but it-
I had it closed after you finished the letter.
Did you have it closed, okay?
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so now we're in discussion as board members?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. If it's zoned, RA. And I think that's up to the City Council to get it zoned RA. But as it stands, RS, without that change, it is not permitted to go to a multifamily property. It's a no, am I correct in reading my table? It says no.
Correct, that's why they're asking for a variance.
That's right, but it's a no, and sometimes when we have, when we have things that are prohibited, or we have things that are a no, there's a reason for it. And I would love to see the property be used in this manner, but I want to see the City Council change it to RA.
If we give a variance tonight, it will essentially change it. Am I correct, Rob?
No, granting a variance does not change the, the underlying zoning district, the underlying zoning district remains RS.
Why would, why would that be the case? Uh, we want it to be RA, we want it to be in part of the RA.
But that is not the application that's before the zoning board tonight.
That's right, that's right.
All that's before the zoning board tonight is the variance for the use for multifamily and the, and the variance for density. At, at the planning, the, the planning board next month will be hearing a proposal to redistrict it to residential apartment.
So are we not waiting until then? Why are we doing it now?
Because if they wanted to submit an application now-
That's true, that's true.
This is the correct process.
Yeah.
All we do is we guide applicants through the process, and this is the correct process.
Okay.
But they were in front of the planning board last month.
Correct. Yeah, we did, we discussed it the last month at planning board and the month previous at planning board. And Counselor Cheney tabled it because, but, but that was the first time he had heard of it, because he was not at the last planning board.
Well, I'm inclined to give approval tonight.
Eric, what are your thoughts?
I feel like it's the correct use of the variance, I think the, the apartment complex is a better, has more utility to the community than a underutilized commercial property, I'm for it.
I don't want to be the lone vote, but I would really like to see the zoning changed, but I will go along with it because I don't want to, without five people here, if my vote would be a problem.
Well, we all have our right to vote as we feel is best for the city.
No, I think it's a great, a great use, I really do, I want to see it go forward. But I'm just concerned that the zoning is incorrect right now for it, that's all.
But the variance would allow them to go ahead.
What is the proper procedure to change zoning, is that the purview of the planning board?
So, to change the zoning, that would be the planning board's function to make that suggestion, then go before City Council to make the official adoption to change the zoning district. But the correct path forward for the applicant, if they're with the zoning district as it is now, is to request the variance for the density and for the use.
Yep, gotcha.
So, enough being said, Richard?
Let me make the proposal?
Looking for a motion?
I'm, I make a motion to approve variance number two oh two five zero three three for thirty-five Oak Street.
Zero three two four thirty-five Blueberry Lane.
He's close.
I appreciate the clarification.
Very, very similar addresses tonight.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve, to, to approve the variance two oh two five zero two three thirty-five Blueberry Lane. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest as it is consistent with the local neighborhood. The granting of the variance does fit within the spirit of the ordinance as the development is consistent with growth, granting of the variance would do substantial justice as it does increase housing in our community. And the granting of the variance, there's no evidence negative or positive to the property values. Relative to hardship, it is a unique lot. Under item I, it is a unique lot, a unique large lot, and a multifamily is a better utility for the, for the property. And under double I, the proposal is reasonable, be, reasonable because it is the development of twenty-one housing units.
I'm pleased. Thank you, Richard, if you have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Marcia. Any further discussion? I agree with you that, you know, it'd be nice to have it just changed the zoning, but I think that's a bigger problem than asking for a variance, am I correct, Rob?
He's right, people have the right to come before the board and make a request, and then it's up to us to determine whether we want to grant the request or not, and-
I think, I think the variance request that they're doing is the, the most professional way to go forward with this, because you're providing a public hearing specifically for this, as opposed to a zoning amendment where you're not necessarily notifying all the abutters of a, in the district. So this is, this gives a lot of public hearing and ability for an abutter to actually come out and voice their real concerns. So I think this is a great process.
And it also releases it to the planning board, which is second review and second public input.
Very good. I have a motion and a second, and no more discussion? In favor? It passes. Good luck, folks, and the Lazy E is a wonderful place, I stopped up there and looked around, and you did a great job up there, I have to commend you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
So any abutters can-
Yep. Mr. Chair, the next application, ZB two zero two five dash zero three three, thirty-five Oak Street, has been withdrawn.
So, will they come back, they have to just re- reapply and renotice and everything?
If they decide to come back, they'll have to reapply, and they'll get, everything will get renoticed.
So they're not asking for an extension for a month?
So for this one, they've just withdrawn their application.
Okay. Moving right along, we have fifteen Morris Avenue, near Weers Beach.
We were here for Oak Street.
Sorry that folks came in for no application. Is Morris Avenue here?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Come on up, please.
Yes, come on up.
Good evening, how you doing?
Hello.
I'm Jim Coles from Walker and Barney, here on behalf of Community Rentals. And my client is in the back, we have the architect Claire Wilkins. Alright. Given that we have six different variance applications before the board tonight, what I'll do is just give you a general overview of the project, and then I will go through each variance, going through each criteria. And then I'm assuming you will want to take up each variance as we go along in order just to try to do this as logically as possible, I'm seeing some head nodding, yes. Alright, so, first and most importantly, the proposed construction will be more conforming than the existing structure that's currently found at fifteen Morris Avenue in multiple ways. As it stands, there's a dilapidated rundown building, it's not particularly safe at fifteen Morris Avenue. And it's literally on Forest, on Morris Avenue, so when I'm saying that it's like on it, I mean that literally part of the building is actually onto the road, the porch extends onto it, and is actually on Morris Avenue itself. With the proposal, it will bring the structure at the property within all of the property lines, and it'll be more conforming in a number of ways, which we'll discuss as I go through. And it's also going to result in a net coverage reduction, meaning more green space compared to the current conviction, uh, conditions with the addition of a small strip of land that used to be known as Wesley Avenue. As part of this proposal, there would be a deed that would be recorded as a condition precedent in order to go forward that would transfer the property from Weers Beach Properties LLC, which is also owned and operated by my clients, and that would be transferred to fifteen Morris Avenue, and would become one lot of record as a result. And in general, the proposal moves the building further away from the lake, which is certainly in line with the goals and purposes of the Shoreland Protection Overlay District, which is, which is within. And, um, most of this is, most of the way that it's becoming more conforming is done through the use of vertical development, which I'll discuss as we go along also, and using the top of the building as outdoor living space, which the property would otherwise completely lack because of the way that it is situated, and because of the dimensions and the unique characteristics of the lot. Addressing variance number one, which is density, and it's Article Six, Section two thirty-five thirty-three. In terms of density, for the residential uses with municipal water and sewer, you'd be looking at a minimum land area, uh, area of ten thousand square feet, and six units per ten thousand feet with eighty feet of frontage. So looking at the first criteria, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. In order for a variance to be contrary to the public interest, the Board of Adjustment, ZBA Handbook, basically says you guys should be answering two questions. The first one is, does the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare? And I'm going to be a little bit more in detail on this variance, and then as we go through, I'm going to refer back to prior testimony, that way we don't have you guys here until like eleven-thirty or midnight going through all of these. And so I'm going to try not to be repetitive doing it. But first, the proposed construction is not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Morris Avenue as it is, is situated in a densely packed residential neighborhood near the Weers Beach Boardwalk. It's a three-story and two, uh, three-story and two-story residential, and commercial residential houses are currently what you would find there. I've provided you with a number of exhibits for the hearing. Exhibit ten and eleven are screenshots from the website Airbnb. And now that I just said that name, to be very clear, that is not what my clients are looking to do. They are looking for long-term renters, not short-term renters like Airbnb, but I'm using this just as an example. If you look at Exhibits ten and eleven, you will notice that there are between, at least when I was doing screenshots of them, twenty Airbnb locations in the general vicinity, just in the Weers Beach area, and there are six that are closer to the Morris Avenue property itself. And again, that's not what my clients are looking to do, it's just an example showing that a lot of people are using residential, commercial uses already in the area in terms of not changing the essential character of the neighborhood. In this neighborhood, whether a property has a backyard, side yard, front yard, or anything like that to speak of really varies from property to property. The subject property itself, fifteen Morris Avenue, has really little to no front yard or side yard to speak of for the most part. And despite the tight area that the property presents with for development through vertical development and construction, and the integration of tax map one thirty-nine, one sixty-five eighty-three, which is that short, certain small area called Wesley Avenue. By doing that, we will be able to not only make the property more conforming, but it will also make it more aesthetically pleasing for the area and modernizing it. And just generally speaking, the, there are other properties that I'll discuss as we go along that likewise are using more modern building technologies, more modern materials, and just generally modernizing the area. As for the specific density requirements in the ordinance, again, it's a minimum land area of ten thousand square feet and a minimum lot, frontage of eighty feet. The proposal is just short of the required frontage requirement, there's about seventy-five plus or minus feet, not eighty, so it just misses by about four to five feet in terms of that requirement for road frontage. As for the land area, the existing conditions total two thousand two hundred and thirty-six square feet, and the proposal with the integration of that other lot increases the area to three thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet, making it more conforming with the ordinance as increasing it makes it closer to the minimum land area. In terms of residential units per acre, there are six units that are permitted per ten thousand square feet. And just for purposes of using an example, when you extrapolate essentially what would be there for the proposed construction, divide that by ten thousand square feet, as that's what the minimum that's allowed there, you get a ratio of point three four three six. And if you apply that to the six units that are permitted in this area, it actually comes out to two point zero six one six. This is just an example, it's not dispositive of anything, but it does show that it's not going to really change the character of the neighborhood, because when we're talking about density, in terms of proportion in the lot size, we are talking about something that's technically similar to what you guys already have in your ordinance. So basically, if you worded the ordinance differently, it would arguably apply to it, or it would be conforming, it's just it's not because the land use, the land area that we're talking about is so small. Alright, in terms of public health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood, the, the New Hampshire Supreme Court has interpreted that to mean that an applicant only needs to show that it won't harm the public interest if the application is granted. And when we're talking about density here, and as I'll discuss in some of the other ones, in addition, what's happening here by taking the property or the building that's on there off of the road, and I'll also be discussing the fact that there is a two-bay garage that's going to be used on the property. This is one of the few ones in the area that's actually going to have off-street parking, which is important for this area. In terms of public health and safety, that's going to increase the safety of the area because whether it's fire protection, it's going to be easier for fire trucks to get in and out, and if you're talking about emergency services, you're getting ambulance in and out of there easier also because there'd be less congestion on the roadway. That is somewhat related to density, it applies more to the other variances that I'm going to be talking about, but it does help show that no public health- but it does help show that no public health issues are going to be caused by the proposed construction going forward. It would be the complete opposite. Also, uh, we would talk about removing an old rundown structure that is currently at the property that's arguably not safe, tearing that down and putting something that's more modern that is safer and with better building materials. I think it'll help also with tourism to some degree. Like I said, they, they're looking for long-term renters, but people visiting them and long-term renters showing up for the first time, they're going to be using everything that Laconia has to offer in the Weers Beach area itself, given how close it is to the boardwalk, which is only going to help tourism and the economy in the whole, which is mentioned throughout the ordinance, is something that is a positive for the area. And there's absolutely no reason to believe that there'd be any negative impact to the lake possible from this. In fact, we're moving the building farther away from the shoreline. So I believe the first fight, uh, criteria is satisfied. In terms of the second criteria, the spirit of the ordinance of being observed, as noted in the handbook I mentioned earlier, um, this is related to the first criteria and it's satisfied, it's satisfied if the construction will not violate the basic zoning objectives of the ordinance by altering the essential character of the neighborhood or threatening the public health and safety. For many of the reasons I just mentioned a moment ago, because these two are interrelated, I believe that this criteria is also met. In terms of criteria number three, substantial justice is done. For this one, the two thousand twenty-three handbook, the more recent version of it, provides that perhaps the only guiding rule is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. The, for, the Supreme Court has further indicated that whether the proposed development is consistent with the area's present use is another aspect of this criteria. This requires what I would call a balancing test. So what we're looking at, and in my opinion, is a win-win situation. The benefit to my clients are clear. They would be able to take down a structure that really isn't usable right now, that's arguably not safe, that's literally on the road in, in one portion, and have a two-store, uh, two-building townhouse. Uh, there are two-unit townhouse there, instead of catering to long-term renters. And the kind of construction is economically more efficient, more green compared to larger building that they originally wanted to do. This is a smaller scaled back version of what they had originally planned. It also complies with side sets, uh, setbacks and is more conforming than the existing structure in many ways for both front and side setbacks, the vertical construction that would allow for rooftop living, and it would create some outdoor living space, which is at a premium in this area because otherwise, most properties don't have that at all in this neighborhood. For the community, bringing the property in more compliance with the ordinance would better help with public safety, as I was mentioning before, would promote a generally consistent community appearance and improve privacy from, for some neighbors as well. Moving the structure farther from the lake, as I mentioned. And it is consistent with pre-existing uses that are already in the area. As I mentioned, there's probably more, but there's at least twenty-six other properties that I'm aware of that use commercial residential properties. There might be more than that if you looked at other websites like the RBO, Pecanza, and a number of other ones. There's probably more than that as it is. And if you look at Exhibits twelve through fifteen, these are pictures from the neighborhood. It's just to show that the proposed construction that my clients are trying to go forward with is consistent with the more recent and modern construction that's happening in the neighborhood. There was a property on Centenerife, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Avenue, that looks like kind of a similar modern construction that's going on right now. And there's also one on Thompson Avenue. You can't see it very well because it's not a colored picture. It's got a Margaritaville sign on it. But if you look at it, it's a much more modern construction. I think there's even like an outdoor television that's on it, and it's similarly using more modern materials, and that's already present in the neighborhood. So I believe that this is really a win-win situation where it's both benefiting my clients and benefiting the community in a number of ways. In terms of the fourth criteria, uh, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. In this situation, from my experience doing this type of work, when you take a property as the one that's currently found at fifteen Morris Avenue and you're replacing it with something that's more aesthetically pleasing, that's more modern, not dilapidated, not missing windows, not structurally unsound, and replacing it with something like, uh, what my clients are proposing, I think it's foreseeable to say that the property taxes for fifteen Morris Avenue itself are going to increase. And it's entirely possible, which is good for the town, for neighboring properties to s- to likewise potentially see, um, increase, which is good for the town in terms of tax revenue. Maybe not great for everybody, but it does improve the area. And that's something that is routinely seen when you do update and modernize an older building like what we're talking about doing. So it certainly wouldn't negatively impact the neighborhood. If anything, it would likely enhance it. In terms of the fifth criteria, I'm looking at the special conditions of the property. I think this is quite important. The two thousand eighteen handbook says this tends, uh, this test attempts to balance the public good resulting from the application of the ordinance against the potential harm to a private landowner. As I said before, I consider this a win-win situation. But given how small the lot is, if the ordinance was strictly interpreted, you would have what I would call a very absurd-looking building. That would be forty feet in length, six feet in width, and thirty-five feet in height for perspective. I'm somewhere between five-eight, five-nine, so basically add three inches. That's how wide this building would be. I'm not a particularly claustrophobic person, but like, I don't know if you could even pay me to go into this, and I don't even know what the inside of it would look like, but it would make absolutely no sense. And I don't know any builder that would build something like that or, or anybody that would want to live in it. If you look at Exhibit Five, um, it's the allowed buildable area, little rectangle that's in the middle of it. That's what the ordinance would actually allow for this property. That is certainly different from a number of other properties that are found in this neighborhood. There are some others that also likewise would have developmental issues like this and would require variances, but if you look at Exhibit Sixteen, lots that have, uh, like number thirty-nine, forty, fifty-four, fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-six, maybe seventy-five and eighty-five, those all have larger areas to work with that would not present with the same development issues that we're talking about with fifteen Morris Avenue. So, I think it's close to compliance, um, in conter, in terms of the ordinance, in terms of frontage. But really, what it comes down to, and in terms of like extrapolating out the density in terms of just the area that we're dealing with. But if the general purpose of an ordinance is to protect the public health, safety, and general wel- welfare while increasing tourism, increasing people coming to visit the Weers Beach area, then denying the requested variance wouldn't serve the purpose of the ordinance. And really, the construction or the proposed construction itself was designed to make the best reasonable use of the property by constructing vertically because that was really the only option, um, at a property like this in order to make the best reasonable use, while at the same time, it's somehow getting farther away from the lake and it's complying with a number of other setbacks, which I will discuss later. And origin interpretation of the ordinance would result in that absurd-looking building, which I don't think anybody would want to go inside, let alone rent for like twelve months. In terms of the proposed use being a reasonable one, zoning ordinances in general are adopted to promote good public design and appropriate use of land and buildings, and I believe the proposed construction does that. And the ordinance itself recognizes the need, even in places like the Shoreland Protection Overlay District area, that when you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, they are treated differently under the ordinance. You are allowed to repair or replace them as long as you're becoming more conforming with the ordinance, and that's what my clients have done here with the proposed construction. Alright, and while this is a subjective judgment call on behalf of like any zoning board when you are doing something involving what is reasonable or whether the proposed use is reasonable, here, uh, neighboring properties again will not be diminished by this work, and the landowner's proposed use would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It's consistent with the other buildings that you have pictures of, and the use is consistent with many other properties that are in the area as well. And then finally, for the alternative, uh, sub-criteria B, a variance is necessary in order to enable the reasonable use of the property. As I've already described, without it, you've got a building forty feet in length, six feet in width, and thirty-five we, uh, feet in height. That doesn't make any sense. And if the overall purpose of an ordinance is to ensure that development occurs in reasonable locations that protect the safety of the general public, a building like this is basically what you'd have in mind in terms of the proposed construction. That weird absurd-looking building I was describing earlier is not what anybody would have in mind. And it does help the public safety as well, like I said before, I'll talk about it more later, by, by putting garages underneath a building that will help keep, uh, cars off of the road. This is already very like a small, tight area as it is. So my clients have been creative, have been smart about the way that they've been proposing the construction in order to make the best reasonable use of the property. And I believe that they have met the five criteria for the density part alone. Alright, do I have any questions from the board?
I want to ask you about the parking. And I know that's a separate variance, but it helps me to understand.
Sure, there, all of these are all interrelated.
Is that you need four parking spots. And when I read your application, you talked about if you had compact cars, you could get four compact cars in the garage.
Correct.
But if you had an SUV, you could get two SUVs in that garage. So my question is, where are the other two cars going if they're SUVs?
Correct, and that's why we had to ask for a variance for parking. So, regular compact-sized cars don't anticipate a problem.
Right.
Even if there's an additional one, there will still be, uh, room on the side of the building where they're not going to put impervious, um, uh, any kind of impervious, uh, structure on the ground. There'd still be room to park there as well. But otherwise, if there was somebody there that had more vehicles than that, they would have to figure out something for long-term parking.
So tell me about, you, you talk about that in your application as well, this side of the building. What side of the building are you referring to? The Morris Avenue side?
So, if you look at, let me find the best one for you. Alright, so if you look at Exhibit Six, right here, this entire area is the former Wesley Avenue, um, portion that's currently owned by the neighboring property owned by Weers Beach Properties LLC. That would be conveyed to my clients as part of the application process or as part of the approval process, there would be room to park vehicles there if needed. It's not the idea. The idea is to have it in the garage, but if needed, there's additional space on that whole area for it. And if there was more needed than that, then whoever that person was that has that many vehicles would need to make, otherwise make arrangements to park elsewhere.
When you talk about that other property, um, are you talking about the property on Allen Avenue? Is it eighteen Allen Avenue that abuts your property?
Yes.
And that, is that the property you're talking about?
Yes, so if you look at Exhibit Two.
Right.
Yeah, the property right next to it, it's tax map one thirty-nine, lot forty-six, sub-lot eighty-six. And I don't have my glasses on right now, but I believe I just read that correctly, where it says Weers Beach Properties LLC.
Right.
And that's an LLC owned and operated by my clients. The idea is that the property, that strip of land would be conveyed from Weers Beach to Community Rentals as part of this.
So, I, I visited the property, and that strip of land, that the owner, whoever is living in that property on Allen Avenue is using that driveway to park in. He comes in off of Morris and he's using that strip of land to get to that property on Allen. So is that still going to be the same situation? Even though, even though that property is going to be conveyed to Morris, is still the property on Allen Avenue going to be using that property, that land as well for parking?
That would be something that my clients would have to address. But also, if you're talking about that, there'd still would be room on the side that's directly next to the building for probably multiple vehicles. But again, the idea is to put it underneath the building where the garage is. Like I said, that would have up to four compact cars or two SUVs or one SUV, two compact cars. So that could be something that my clients would have to address in the future, but there still would be room to park next to the building, just visualizing it for probably one to two vehicles in addition to what's already underneath the building.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
So relative to the Wesley Ave property, who currently owns that right now?
The Wesley Ave property is owned by Weers Beach Properties LLC. I had to do title work on it in order to determine that.
Is that recent? Because the, the town tax, the city tax maps are not, do you not have any of that information?
Correct. I'm not sure why, when I did the title history to it, it is clear that Weers Beach Properties owned it. I think it might have just been because of the types of the descriptions that were in the deed, but it is quite clear, and I'm not sure why the town currently has that. I had that question as well, but after doing the title work, it is clearly owned by Weers Beach Properties.
Yes.
So, is there a purchase and sa- is there a purchase and sales in place or some document that kind of gives a paper trail of that? I don't necessarily have to have that tonight because planning will probably ask for it.
Sure, the proposed deed does have a reference to the meaning and intending clause, and it was conveyed to Weers Beach by Carol Doherty, who is the trustee of a trust. And I think it might have just been the way that the deed was drafted that I think potentially led to some conclusion, but that's ju- or confusion, but that's just my guess. But from looking at the actual title history to the property, they do clearly own it.
Okay.
That's a good question, though. I, I had the same question when it first came up because I was trying to figure out who owned it, and when we did more title research, it was Weers Beach.
Well, a strange thing in your existing, your, your drawing, your submitted drawing of the existing conditions and proposed, your proposed has a lot line that separates the Allen Avenue property from the Morris Ave property?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. One of the conditions precedent that I would recommend before the, uh, board would be to have Norway Plains update that. Originally, we had considered using half of the property, but after doing more analysis, we needed the entire one, not just half of it, for the variance applications that are before you guys tonight. So that would be one thing, that would be a condition precedent for that to be updated by Norway Plains before it's recorded. So thank you for bringing that up.
That makes sense. When we have our board discussion, we can talk about it, I'll let you know. Okay, so, last clarification about that.
Mm-hmm.
Is, so your proposal here tonight is that, that Wesley or Wellesley? Wesley?
I call it Wesley.
Wesley.
I believe it's Wesley.
I do not have my good glasses on because I can't see this teeny print.
Yeah, I am forty-four as of today, and I have to wear cheaters.
Fair point.
Now in order to do this.
So your, your client's proposal at this point is to split in half the Wesley property, half of it going to this project in Morris Ave, and then the other half of it being set aside for potentially something future on Allen Ave.
No, so the, to clarify that, the proposal is all of Wesley Avenue would be transferred to, so would the condition precedent would be that that line needs to go away?
Yeah, 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 I got you.
And all the dimensions are correct in the, um, in the variance applications in terms of the square footage of that, which I'll get into later when we're dealing with, I believe it's the green space one.
Yep.
But, uh, no, that is a good point. I'm glad you brought that up because that was one point of clarification I wanted to mention earlier and I didn't get to it.
Okay, and I'm fine with you on that.
Yep. So no, but it is, to be very clear, it's the entire Wesley Avenue lot right there is part of this application.
Okay, so we can talk about that. Okay, I'm complete with you. Thank you.
Any other questions for attorney call?
Yeah, so the proposed height of the new structure would be forty-four feet?
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the majority of it, and I'll deal that with that in the height one, but it's thirty-five feet is the vast majority of all the living area. It's just essentially that outdoor space on the top, and it's really just the stairway, um, towers. That's the, that's what puts it over and requires the height variance.
And how does that compare to the abutting properties?
In terms of, I'll address it later. I believe off the top of my head, I think we estimate that it's twenty-five to thirty-one feet high as of right now at the highest point on the existing building. And if we were there right now, the land starts sloping significantly. So I don't believe it's going to impact the neighborhood or the essential character of the neighborhood in that regard. But again, we'll deal, we'll talk, discuss that further in the height section of it. But when you're there visually, you can see how severe the slope is, which is also how we're able to get the garage in under, which is like a premium in that neighborhood because I don't, I was there in the winter. I had my first job actually when I was a kid at the Weers Beach Boardwalk. It's now Saw, uh, Sawyer's on the pier. It used to be Sugar and Spice, and one of my coworkers lived over there. I remember how all the cars are parked there like in the summer. So definitely having the garage underneath is important, but I'll address that later too. But really, the height variance is because of those two towers themselves. Otherwise, it would be within the correct amount.
Gotcha.
Yep. It's a good question.
Anything else, Marcia, for Mr. Coles? Okay, Jim, I'll ask you to have a seat, and I'll open this meeting up to the public. If anybody would like to speak for or against the application, please come up.
How do you do, sir?
Good evening. My name's Sean Flanagan. I live at twenty-four Allen Ave. Lived there for ten years. I've got a number of issues with this project, a number of issues. I'm kind of sup- I mean, is it, does it take six variances to get, is that normal to get six variances? To get a building approved, built? To get six variances to get a building approved, built? I'm going to read my first statement. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the petition for six variances at 15 Morris Ave. I believe there are significant and material inconsistencies and misrepresentations of the facts in the applicant's petition that make the approval of such variances completely misguided and inappropriate. Well, there are many issues with the application. I want to bring four significant issues to your immediate attention. The applicant states multiple times that the proposed project reduces the non-conformity nature of the existing property. That is inaccurate and a total misrepresentation of the facts. The applicant's proposal will increase non-conformity. First, look at Exhibit Five. You guys have Exhibit Five? The existing lot size is 2,236 feet. Thirty percent of that number is 671 square feet of allowed coverage. But in the bottom right box of this box, the applicant claims the allowed coverage is 399 square feet. Those numbers don't make sense. What it looks like the applicant did, and I might be mistaken, is they applied the 30% to the estimate of the existing footprint, 30% of 1,329. This is an error. So that statement that the existing lot is 930 square feet over the allowed amount is not correct. Second, I have no idea how the applicant arrives at the current coverage of 1,329 square feet shown on Exhibit Five. Let's look at the 15 Morris Ave PDF file, the tax card that's downstairs. The tax lot shows a footprint of 1,040 square feet. It's on the tax card. Which incidentally includes a garage and shed that was demolished 12 to 18 months ago. So actually, if you measure that building that's there now, the remaining structure is 858 square feet. They are proposing 1,356 square feet, which is actually one and a half times the size of the structure that's there now. So the new structure is not smaller, as they state somewhere in their paperwork, but it's larger. I encourage you to go down to the billing department and ask if a permit was ever issued to demolish the garage or the shed, and to do asbestos abatement and remediation on what they tore down. It was not done. And in fact, the state has been notified that they removed that garage and building, and removed that asbestos without a permit. And I know, I know myself, based on my experience from 10 years ago, that when I had my property, which abuts this property, to be renovated, and 30, 80% of it torn down, when I went to get the building permit, they asked me if I had, if I knew if there was asbestos there. And I said, gee, I don't know. You're going to have to get somebody to come out there and check it. I hired a company to come to the site. They found, I forget now, 10, 12, eight spots of asbestos on the property. And I had to get a company to come, and they showed up in white overalls and removed all the asbestos from the property, packed it up in bags, and I've got documents at home to say where it went. It might have went to Maine, Vermont, Canada, I don't know. But it's safely someplace else out of the state of New Hampshire. So again, the applicant is overstating the existing footprint of nearly 300 square feet. You get an existing structure is only allowable coverage of 369 square feet, not 930 square feet. The applicant claims. And this is important, because the starting point for their determination of whether or not this is improving or worsening the conformity. There is a big, this has been brought up by the attorney, and, you know, if the, if Document Two is not right, then I don't see how the board can even vote on any of this, because that plan is wrong. And the gentleman brought up the thing about this mysterious black line. Let's look at Exhibit Two in the site plan. This is the surveyor's plot plan. See the black line in the middle of the Wesley Ave? So the surveyor is claiming half of Wesley Ave. But then, in Exhibit Six, throughout the document, that line disappears. And I guess that's what they want to do, all right? So, they should do it before you come, before they come before the board. So what's it going to be? Is it going to be all of Wesley Ave that they're using for their conformity? Or they're going to use half of Wesley Ave? I have no idea how you can make a decision based on that. If the applicant takes half of Wesley Ave as the plot plan, then they will increase non-conformity in opposition to LZO 235-66. If the applicant takes all of Wesley Ave, then they will very slightly improve the conformity. But it opens up a whole new set of issues regarding parking, which I think you mentioned. I want the SBA to be aware of how Wesley Ave is currently being used. And for people that haven't visited the site, would you like to see the picture of, what was there yesterday? Or you've seen it, or would somebody else like?
I've taken a picture of that situation.
You're speaking of the pickup truck that pulls through.
The pickup trucks, there's two pickup trucks and a car, which you can see on the other, on the Allen Ave view. And then in the summertime, the man has a motorcycle. But that's parked next to my house. The applicant needs a variance, because the commercial resort district residential use dimensional requirement requires 10,000 square feet. And the lot with 100% of Wesley Ave is 3,436 square feet. They make the argument that extrapolating the dimensional requirements to their lot fits in with logic and the spirit of the LZO. This is ridiculous. If you take their rationale and take it as a logical conclusion, the LZO will support new homes of 1,667 square lot feet. That's 10,000 divided by six. The entire spirit of the 10,000 square foot land area was up to four, was up to six units. Is that lot significantly large enough to accommodate the needs of a multifamily living situation? The LZO is written with a minimum land area, because they are obviously basic economies of scale. Literally extrapolating the minimums is completely illogical and against the spirit of the core concept utilizing the minimum thresholds for zoning bylaw. Finally, I want to address the notion that the only option the applicant has is to build an absurd-looking four-by-six-by-35-foot structure. This assertion is absurd. And, you know, building that size, that shape of a project, as the attorney mentioned, would be ridiculous-looking. There is an existing single-family non-conforming structure there now. As we all know, the city council, the City of Laconia zoning board has demonstrated time and time again, variances to rebuild on the same footprint with a similar structure of size and scope are allowed and permitted without a variance. We all know the applicant could easily build a single-family home there. That's what was there before, and not have to stay within the four-by-six footprint. To say otherwise insults the attention, intelligence of the people in this room. The applicant states numerous times, over 40 times, in the documents that, and I quote, "The proposed construction will not alter the character of the neighborhood." Two, "The commercial residential townhouse will fit in with the essential character of the neighborhood." If you've been there, that's not the case. Anyone who's visited in that neighborhood, let alone lives there, like myself, and several of the people that are here tonight, would find those statements ridiculous. In closing, I urge the board to deny all six petitions. And I also have, and we can go through one by one, I have additional comments for the other five variances requested. So I'm not sure, if you want me to take a rest and have the attorney come back, and we'll go back and forth, but that's where I'm at at the moment.
Do you have more to say, Mr. Flanagan?
A lot more to say.
This is your moment.
Get it all out now.
Yeah.
Even though it's over the six different projects.
I understand.
Mr. Cole, though, is only addressing the first, the first.
Yeah, if he, you know, if he's going to address the number 30, number 35, then I'll come back with number 35.
You're going to have six public hearings on this one, so.
Okay, Mr. Flanagan, thank you for your statement, but I will have you come back later.
I'll be back, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Hi. Yes, sir, state your name, please.
Jay Dooley, 22 Morris Ave, 20 Morris Ave as well. It's been, these properties have been in the family since 1963, and they're directly across the street from 15 Morris Ave. Couple things I just wanted to refute, that the council had mentioned. There are no three-story buildings on Morris Ave, if you've ever been there. Also, he stated several times that the structure would be moved back from the lake. There really has no bearing anything. It's the second house, it's not lakefront. It's about 10 feet from the house in front of it, and moving it back a few feet really has no bearing, you know, on the project at all. Three, the parking. You know, we own the private lot. The lot is always filled up in the summer. You know, it's completely filled up on weekends. You know, he stated that if somebody came with two minivans and other cars, that they would just have to figure it out. There just is not enough parking, if anybody's been there. I don't know what else to say, there's just not enough parking. Then the last thing. Yes, the building is dilapidated right now. When they bought it, it wasn't in the greatest of shape, but they have been working there, as Sean said. Tearing it apart, you know, took the shed down. And that's a big chunk of why it is in disrepair right now. I just came from the property before I came here to the meeting. I do agree that something needs to be done. And it would be wonderful to put something up with, you know, better material and whatnot. But what they're proposing is, would not, would not make the neighborhood better. It would stick out like a sore thumb. The house was built in 1887, as are most of the properties down there on the lakefront, Methodist Circle. As Sean said, building would be too large, there's no place to park. And then the last thing, and I think this is probably the most important point. They do own the building behind it, on Allen Street. It has been used, it was used as an Airbnb last summer. They're saying this is going to be long-term tenants. I don't know the law, but if this building goes up, and they claim it's going to be long-term tenants, what is to stop them from using this as an Airbnb? It's in a neighborhood that commands several thousand dollars a week, you know, in the summertime. Honestly, from a fiscal viewpoint, it would be crazy not to use it as an Airbnb. This is a family neighborhood, and I can tell you that from last year, even though they're the next street over, we had several tenants of the Airbnb come over. We have lakefront property, stand in front of our property and marvel at it, it's a million-dollar view. But it's private property, we own the street, we own the land. We bought the street in front of us, and, you know, we like our privacy with our neighbors. So, the fact that they keep touting that this is going to be long-term tenants, you know, I don't think that we can prevent them, after you give them permission to build this, I don't think we could do anything to prevent them from them using it to be an Airbnb during the summer months. So, that's, that's my piece, after being there for 57 years.
One question, Mr. Dooley.
Yep.
Do you have the Exhibit 20 in front of you?
I don't.
I'm just wondering where your house is on Morris. I see Lot 78, 79, I'm assuming.
Diagonal down the hill.
Yeah, diagonally in front, and then the house across the street, 20, is my stepsister's home.
Very good, sir. Thank you for your statements tonight.
Okay.
My name is James Coe, I live in the house right beside Jay's, right beside the house in question. And parking is a real concern of ours. During the summer, we can barely get into our place. If there's anybody parked on the street, they block the street, you can't get in, you can't get out. Even if they pull as far over as they can. Wesley Avenue is only 16 feet wide. There's a high rock wall there. So as these people come out with these trucks, they can't get out into the road. They've got to turn about 16 times to get out into the road, so they can leave the area. It's very tight there. I don't see how Wesley Road can be part of anything, because the people in that other house are using it for parking. During the week in the summer, it's tight. Weekends are ridiculous, there's just no place to park. Having one house to replace the empty house would make it even worse. Having a duplex would make it even worse. That house has been vacant for as long as I can remember. And, you know, nobody has parked at that particular, or nobody that's lived in that house has been parking there. So even there, there's no parking. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Jim. James. Hello, come on up. How do you do?
Good, Melanie Flanagan, I'm at 24 Allen Ave. My understanding, and from my personal experience from seeking a variance, I always thought you have to show hardship, prove hardship to be granted a variance. And the applicant for these six variances, they purchased a single-family home. That's what's there. In a single-family neighborhood. That's what they purchased, and that's the neighborhood. They're choosing, not out of hardship, but they're choosing to build this new construction out of their desire to do so. The applicant is currently able, as Sean had mentioned, others have mentioned, to rebuild, remodel, replace the existing structure on the same footprint without any issue. So there's no need for these six variances to rebuild, and to stay in the character of the neighborhood. Instead of the existing, if you look at those plans, instead of the existing 19-by-31 footprint, the applicant is proposing a 30-by-40 flat-roof structure that is somewhere between 56 and 54 feet high, where most of the homes, and most average homes, are 25 or 30, say 30 feet high. So we're talking 16 to 18 feet higher, and 11 to 13 feet higher than the max allowed. Community rentals' argument that they need these variances, otherwise they could only build a six-foot-by-40-foot, not four-foot, as Sean misstated, but 40-feet structure is ludicrous and just plain ridiculous. They can rebuild a single-family house like the one that they purchased on its exact footprint. There's no need, it's not going to be a 6-by-40. Their proposal will alter, it will alter, the essential character of the neighborhood. It will not fit in, and it does not enhance or aesthetically improve the neighborhood. And regarding parking, it is also ludicrous to think that a two-family house will only have two regular-sized vehicles. And as it's been stated, but I'm going to state it again, please note that the applicant's abutting property at 18 Allen Ave is now rented to a single couple. That single couple owns two full-size pickup trucks, a That single couple owns two full-size pickup trucks, a regular-sized car, and a motorcycle, and they utilize that full length going from Morris to Allen to park their vehicles. Parking is a problem. So simply put, in my simplistic way, community rentals is trying to stuff fifteen pounds into a five-pound bag. The proposal is not in the best interest of the neighborhood, and is not necessary, and I urge you to deny all six variances.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Melanie. Hello, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Pam Cott, and I live at twenty-one Morris Ave. I have bought the property that's in discussion, and I drove up from Maryland yesterday, because this is very important to me and to my husband. They, I have lived on Morris Ave for over sixty-two years, and I feel as though I am familiar with the area, and we have a big issue with parking, and as everybody else has stated before me. However, if I was to need a fire truck or an ambulance to come down my street, they cannot come down that road. And if anybody's parked on it, it's gonna be even worse. We had to call a fire truck when our boat was sinking at the dock a couple of years ago. They, they had to carry everything by hand down the street, they couldn't get the truck down the street. And if there was any car parked in the road, it would have been worse. I have had the occasion to call the Borgy Brothers, this, whatever their company is called. I think the light was left on in the house, and I was trying to call them, well, their voicemail was full, so there's no way you can get in touch with them. And I have a feeling if we had any complaints about the people parking in the street, that it would fall on deaf ears, that we would be, I would not bother the police over something like that, but I would like to be able to get up with the owners of the property. I think that having two families there is overusing the property, it's a small lot. They park two pickup trucks beside each other, one on Wesley, one in the yard where the garage used to be, and then the other one is parked in front of the house that's on Allen Ave. And to get into that garage under the house is gonna be quite a curve, because you were down there, the house that's got the stilts.
Yep.
The cars sometimes are parked two in and one up in back of them. There's no, no room to turn to get a car into that space. So, the house is what it is, they saw it before they bought it. If they didn't like it, they shouldn't have purchased it, and I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here tonight, ma'am.
Last one, I think.
Hello.
Noreen Kelly, twenty-two Morris Ave. I also made the trip up from Massachusetts tonight, just because I thought this was very important. I am opposed to all other variances as well, I really do think that building a five-story skyscraper in a camp neighborhood where all the buildings are over a hundred years old. Nothing is really more than two stories where we're at, but they're looking to put a garage, three stories of living space, and a rooftop deck that's gonna look, you know, over everybody's homes, is just absolutely ridiculous. It doesn't fit in, as Pam stated and Sean stated, the parking is atrocious here. My family has six cars there on summer weekends that we cram into our spots. You know, the Cotts will have two cars, the people next to us have four, how are we gonna put four more cars? Even if they can squeeze four cars into that garage, any one car, you know, parked in between fourteen and fifteen is gonna block nine other cars, and it will just be unassessable. I'm pretty confident that it will be used as an Airbnb. Nobody is going to rent on the Weers in the wintertime. It's just not someplace that would be a full-year rental type of property. This means constant people walking down the street onto our property, what a view, can we get, can we get to the water, can we do this? It, it, it's just an absolute nuisance, just to have to continually, no, I'm sorry, you know, you can't get to the water, you can't do this, and I just see this being a big problem. The other issue is, there just absolutely is not room for two, a two-family home there, it's atrocious. The ordinances are in place for a reason, that they're asking for six variances is absurd. Again, there is a, a home there, they could build on the footprint, a single-family home, there is absolutely no reason for them to have a two-family structure on that postage-stamped lot. We can't, the lot can't accommodate it, the neighborhood can't accommodate it, and it will be very detrimental to all of the neighbors, all single-family homes, everybody that showed up here tonight. So that is my piece.
Thank you for making the drive, Ms. Kelly. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Close the public hearing?
Don't you want to have a lawyer?
If I may respond first before we close the public hearing, sorry. Thank you, I can do this efficiently. In terms of exhibit five, the comments that were mentioned about it, just to deal with this simply, the dimensions on exhibit five and exhibit six are correct. The, where the garage was before can be part of this process, and where that very weird-shaped thing is in between where the garage was and the building is, that's all concrete that's on the ground, these are all part of the application, and it's all completely permissible for them to be part of the application, and the math is correct. In terms of three-story buildings in the area, fourteen and sixteen Haven and sixteen Allen Avenue are all three-story buildings. In terms of the lack of long-term renters in the area, the people that were, they were talking about that are at the Weers Beach property are long-term renters, so those are people that are renting long-term that are there. Also, in terms of the Weers Beach property, there weren't, it was not an Airbnb last summer, that was a year and a half ago. My clients basically responded to prior complaints and comments by other people, and they stopped doing that, and they're now only looking for long-term renters, which I've said multiple times, it's not an Airbnb, that's not what they're looking to do. And we can't rebuild where the building is currently, it's so non-conforming, it's literally in the road. We would not be able to use the same footprint, that would not be permissible. And if you look at exhibit five again, there is a portion of the property that is literally in Morris Avenue that would be coming off with the proposed construction, so it is more conforming in many ways, and some of the other issues that were discussed, I'll talk about later as we go through each variance application, but it is more conforming. And just for one thing of clarity, the majority of the building is thirty-five feet at the heightest, at the highest. The problem is the tower stairs, that's the part that requires the height variance, the actual living area for the building, it is thirty-five feet. So it's just that part that sticks up where the tower stairs go up, that's the reason for the height variance. So it's not the dimensions that were mentioned earlier, or that were just mentioned by some of the abutters. It is, for the most part, within thirty-five feet, it's just that one portion of it. And if I'm hearing everyone correctly, it does sound like parking isn't, it's just visible anywhere, it's just visiting the property and looking around, that you can tell that parking is a problem, I have a similar issue. My family has had a cabin my entire life in Lake Shore Park, and we're all on top of each other where we are in Gilford, so I totally get where everyone's coming from, but my clients incorporated a garage that can fit up to at least four compact cars in it, in this structure, which seems like that's at a premium in the neighborhood from listening to what all the abutters were saying about how big of a problem parking is in the area. I believe I have addressed the majority of those, and just in general, some of the comments. Oftentimes, things like this happen when people like are trying to build something that looks like a little bit different or modernizing an area, it's like, that's not unusual, and I would just refer you guys back to your guidance in terms of like what you're supposed to be doing here and what's before you guys, but in my opinion, this is, in terms of the variances that are requested, going to make this lot significantly more conforming than it is now, not less conforming, and take the structure off of the road, which I would think people would be more supportive of, given the parking issues and the driving issues that everyone was just describing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan.
Could I just say one more thing addressing that, is that okay?
Certainly, sir.
Jay Dooley. I'd just like to say that they bought the building as it is, it may be too close to the road, I don't have the, you know, the plot plan here in front of me, but they bought it, they probably should have, they probably should have known this before they came here. Why would you buy something if you, with that type of issue? Plenty of space for a, for a single-family home, the front of the, I admit that the front of the building is very close to the street, I don't know if I'd actually call it on it, but it is very close to the street, they could use that footprint, they could build a single-family home. They knew what they were buying, you know, so I do disagree with all, you know, all the, all the requests for variances, thank you.
Very good, Ms. Dooley.
Could I just say one thing?
Let's, I mean, this is gonna end up being a, well, let's, let's.
Go in order here, okay, Mr. Flanagan?
Okay, my concern, my only concern is, is if, if you guys approve number thirty-four, and we move on to thirty-five and thirty-six, and I don't see how you can, you can vote on thirty-four when the, that, that little mysterious line is in the documents that were submitted. But, you know, I'm worried that.
You'll have a chance later, Mr. Flanagan.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry.
There was one thing I forgot to mention, if I may. Their party deck is right at the same level as my bedroom windows, and I could foresee a problem there. They're, they're having a party deck on top of the roof of the house. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Cott. Let's close the public hearing.
For, for, for the first one?
You'll have a chance again, Ms. Cott.
Oh, no, that wasn't.
Where do we go from here?
You go to board discussion. I have thoughts.
It's tight up there. If the, if Wesley Avenue becomes property of the new proposed house, Allen Street will have no place to park, because he's using Wesley Avenue.
And that street is so tight, I don't think you can get two-way traffic, and I was up there in the winter with snowbanks.
Thirteen and a half feet was.
You can, you cannot get, you, you, you just can't get two cars passing.
If anybody even pulled over onto the side of the road with, I don't even know how the city plows.
Is that a city of Brew Street?
The city.
It's a private street.
It's a private street, so they take care of their own plowing? Oh, I did, because God.
Negative.
Gotta tell the public.
That's another whole issue.
Okay, well, I, I don't know how it gets plowed, and I don't know how people travel there.
We've just, we've closed the public input, the public hearing, so you just need to be quiet until they finish deliberating. Thank you.
So it, it, it is really, I agree, it is extremely tight, the parking concerns me, the use of Wesley Ave, whether it's gonna be for the Morris Street or the Allen Street property. But the other thing, I looked at twenty-two properties in that neighborhood, every property on Morris, Allen, Thompson, and Century Avenue, and only one of them was a two-family unit. Everything is single-family in there. So if you start changing and allowing two families, you are gonna alter the character of that neighborhood. So I think that with, with the first criteria, do you alter the character of the neighborhood? I say yes, you do. I also think that there is a safety hazard when it comes to parking and cars and congestion because of the dimensions of the street. And I also feel that it doesn't meet criteria number five. This one really, I think, cinches it in my view. Criteria number five says the literal enforcement of the provisions would result in unnecessary hardship. According to the applicant, they claim, and I quote, "Other properties in the area have larger lots which would not present with the same developmental issues." So they're citing that the hardship is the size of the lot. But yet, if I take the twenty-two pieces of property that I determined that twenty-one are single-family, and one is a two-family home, and I look at their acreage, it ranges from point zero-two to point one-one. So what I did was, I took the average of all of those twenty-one pieces, twenty-one properties, and came out with an average lot size of point zero-five-seven. The property at fifteen Morris is point zero-five. So the criteria for number five, you have to have something characteristically different about your property in order to be claimed a hardship. There is nothing, all properties are equal. So it says in, "The restrictions on one parcel are balanced by similar restrictions on other parcels in the same zone. When the hardship so imposed is shared equally," everybody's got an average of point zero-five-seven, that's an average, "is shared equally by all property owners, there are no grounds for hardship." I don't think they meet criteria number five.
So I did the same work that you did relative to multifamily, and there are, and there are very few, very few. Something else, I, I just, I think the shape of it just doesn't fit, that's my opinion. Yes, there are a number of homes that have third floors, but they are in the, in the peak of the home, there are none that are squared off at that, at that dimension. So that's something that I, that I also have, and I'm, and I'm, I'm on the same page as you, Marcia, relative to hardship. There is no, there, I, I don't see any hardship that they can stand on for this particular one. And, you know, I don't know, so that's kind of where I am. Kind of thing is just the size, they could come back with a modified size, it's a little bit more fitting, and I just think, I don't know how we balance, I really would love to have some input from the city council relative to long-term, what to do with this whole area. Every building is non-pre-existing, non-conforming. Everyone is in, is in its neighbor's backyard, and it seems like, you know, I've been doing this for four years, we're throwing Band-Aids on various things, you know, a little bump-out addition here, a little lot-line adjustment here, it seems like we're doing all of that, but is there a, it's a unique part of our community, like, it, it's super unique. I'm in agreement with you to say this lot is not any more unique than anybody else's here, but it's a unique place to the community, and I'm not saying to necessarily make a point of this applicant, but boy, we would, you know, we're volunteer people who live here, that's it, you know? We would, we would like to have some direction from the city council where these people have a chance to be able to say, hey, look, this is what we see, this little part of our unique community being, so when we do have zoning issues that come up or planning issues, we kind of have a little bit more of a master plan. But that doesn't exist right now, we can only have what's in front of us, so that's my little diatribe there. So I, I don't see a hardship, I think the size is just, it, it's too, it is too much for that little community, that's what I see. It's a private road, I get that, parking's always an issue, and because, I mean, I went to drive down there, and here we are in the middle of the summertime, we've had most of our melting is mostly done. I wanna curse, yikes.
I went down Centenary Ave, and another car came at me, I had to go off into a snowbank, you couldn't even get two-way traffic down Centenary Ave.
Yeah, but that's not my issue, my issue is not so much that, I love the fact that it's a small road, I love that, I love Methodist Circle, I love the whole thing. You go for a walk there in the summertime, people are out there enjoying the lake, enjoying each other, having a drink out in the front yard, talking, I love it, love it, love it, I don't mind the small yard, excuse me, the small road. But because of the pitch of that road going down towards the lake, even, even though on paper Wellesley Ave may be twenty feet, it's not bad, because you get that little wallish thing that's going on, and then you got all this right here. There's just the space, yes, I, I'm gonna agree with the attorney that probably the numbers do work relative to what they're asking for, but I, I, I can't cross that bridge, I think we're asking for too much for that little place, so that's kind of where I stand. I have more to say about this, but I don't know, I just, I can't see this design fitting, that's, that's kind of where I am.
Mike, you? I tend to agree, it's a tight area, it's a lovely neighborhood. I don't think this building is in character with the neighborhood. Essentially, as the lady from Massachusetts said, it's, it's five-star.
Well, number one, not contrary to public interest, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, six people stand up who have a vested interest because they, their window reflects on the, all of the windows of this, of this place, and they're saying, yeah, this is contrary to our interest. So.
Where do we go from here? We need a motion?
Is there, um-
Did you wanna comment?
Sure. Um, so I think given the, the density of the neighborhood, I do think we have to be careful. I mean, I think it's very crowded in there. Given the number of non-conforming lots in there, I think it's natural as time goes on and they change hands or, or structures get updated, that, that these things are gonna generate variances. Um, I don't think that's the issue here. I think some of the variances are an issue. I think in particular, parking, the height of the structure. It's possible a, a two-family dwelling could fit on this property, but I'm not sure that what we're looking at right here is, is the right fit. So I, I tend to agree with all of you, especially the point that, uh, the city council needs to weigh in on, on some zoning. I think that, that's been discussed a lot lately. Um, you know, what is the character of these neighborhoods? What are we trying to preserve? And, and how do we get that in writing and put it in front of people so that everyone's on the same page as to-
It's gonna help the public. It's gonna help-
Yes.
The, the, the people, but it's also gonna help the applicant to be able to, you know, at least make a request of something that is, is fitting. And there's some simple cans on it.
Yes, I agree with all of that.
Uh, question. Uh, if the first vari- uh, variance is denied, now does that, are, are we still, would we still go through the other five to deny them all tonight, or?
You would need to vote on each-
Understood.
On each application, and, and they would all need to stand on their own. You also need to open the mouth to public input.
Excuse me?
You also need to open the mouth to the public as well.
So, okay, um, this is, this is a lot to do one night. It's not only is it a lot of, I mean, here, we're volunteer board, these people are here. I don't wanna be here till frickin' two o'clock in the morning, right? And this is unfair to dump it, dump it on, I'm sorry, Scott, but this is unfair to dump six things of this magnitude on us all in one night. So could we do something? Could we, okay, uh, Mike, could we table this or postpone, what's the word, but could we do something to say, "I, I, I, I think that we're all on the same page. I'm not sure where we are with voting. I think all of us are, it seems like we're all saying no to this first one in deference to the applicant. Could we postpone or table or suspend?"
Come back with another plan.
Well, and then, that way, the, we don't, they're not sitting there with six denials. And again, there, there's legal issues with all of that as well, but that way, I mean, I think that the applicant is hearing what we're saying and saying, "Okay, this isn't gonna fly. We've gotta either, we've gotta change." Can we do something like that?
Um, I think so, but Rob is the expert. Scott has his right-hand man on his left side tonight, but-
I, I would probably make a motion on your first application, and I would finish the first application. Then I would open the next application and see what the applicant would like to do at that point.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to deny.
That is the density.
On the density. So I make a motion to, um, deny application ZB two-oh-two-five-dash-three-four on fifteen Morris Ave, which is requesting a variance from Article Six, the dimensional standards, um, to increase, uh, density to a two-family unit. Uh, the findings of facts will be that number one, that, um, if we granted the variance, it would alter the character of the neighborhood because the neighborhood is a single-family residential neighborhood. And, um, that if you opened, there was only one two-family unit, to my knowledge anyway, and that you would open up the neighborhood to being changed if you granted the variance. Also, with criteria number one, there is a safety problem when it comes to, um, congestion and traffic and cars because the street is so narrow and parking is so difficult. Those would be my rationale for not meeting criteria number one. Criteria number two, the spirit of the ordinance. If you do not meet criteria number one, you don't meet criteria number two. So the spirit of the ordinance is not met. Number three, criteria, which is, um, granting of the variance would do substantial justice. The proposal is not consistent with the area because the present use of the area is by single-family usage. Um, the gain would be to the, um, general public, especially in terms of safety, would, there is a, a, more of a gain or importance to meet the public's need, the neighbors' needs when it comes to safety than it is to meet the individual applicant's needs. Uh, also, again, the increasing congestion and parking goes to the safety issue. Number four, values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Uh, with this one, there hasn't been any evidence presented pro or con with regards to value of property. Number five, they don't meet number five, which is the hardship clause because after, uh, evaluating the size of twenty-one properties, the average lot is zero-point-five-seven, fifteen Morris Ave is, um, point zero-five. Therefore, when all properties share the same hardship, there is no hardship to the individual applicant. And for those reasons, I would deny this application.
Thank you, Marcia, well read. I have a motion. I'm looking for a second. Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? I think we're unanimous, um, in favor of denial. Motion fails. Denial passes. Okay. Mr. Coles?
It's your turn. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. I'm a Brits. The W gets almost everybody screwed up. Uh, we're not gonna go forward on the other applications after listening to what's been determined tonight by the board. We're gonna take everything into consideration, and then we'll be back before you.
Come with a nice plan for us. We'll be happy to help you.
That's the idea.
All right, so just wanna be clear, you're looking to withdraw the, uh-
The remaining.
The remaining applications.
Yep.
Okay.
We have to vote on that, or?
I don't believe we have to vote on that since he's withdrawing them.
Correct.
Very good.
Yep. Thank you for your time, sir. Thank you. Have a good one, guys.
Thank you, my fellow board members.
So, Mr. Chair, the next one, um, Gerard Street, they have-
They postponed.
Yes, I believe, is that-
Yes, so eighteen Gerard Street, the, the next three application, four applications, uh, application forty, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three. They're looking to continue those until next month so they can amend their application.
We should've said that at the start of the meeting. I think there's people here to talk about Gerard.
Yeah, that was Gerard Street.
Yeah.
They're, they're postponing.
They're, they're asking for a continuance until next month.
I'm sorry, sir. It's, it's my fault.
They are, they are asking for a continuance so they can amend their application.
That's good.
I should've told you at the beginning of the meeting, sir, it's my fault. I apologize.
Thank you, it was interesting. I might even hide that gun. I don't know. It's his birthday.
And then, uh, Mr. Chair, you'll still have the final one for the short-term lodging.
Yep, ten East McShore.
Yep.
It's postponed till next month?
Yep, so you'll get a new notification in the mail as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm assuming you're East McShore, sir?
I'm Craig, Eastman Road.
Yep.
East McShore Road. Come on up and tell us how we can help you.
Apologies, I was waiting downstairs at six o'clock, cause I didn't know where the meeting was. I was at the zoning board office.
Well, you made it.
I made it, but lovely time. I'm, I'm a doctor, and I start at four AM, and I gotta start at four AM tomorrow morning, so. So whatever you do with this. I purchased this property as part of a ten-thirty-one, which is, I am not allowed to live there for two years. It was selling one property, it had to be a rental property that I purchased, and it came with a tenant. So I hope I've met the criteria for the IRS by the tenant that is currently there. The agenda in my head is, this was supposed to be a property for friends and family replacing a property on the main coast uh, with the sale of that property. And, uh, listening to all of the other stuff is like, it's, it's a, it's an in-law apartment upon a, a, a house. And, uh, I, my hope was to make it my retirement home in a few years as I retire from being a doctor. But in those years, I didn't wanna have to displace a long-term tenant, so I thought an Airbnb would be a good resolution. My tenant would be my onsite manager, so the, the, you know, yeah. In, from a town perspective, I'd want a place not left empty, and I'd want a place where you have onsite management of any Airbnb so that if anybody was acting inappropriately, she'd give them the axe. Um, that's what I was creating or hoping to create. Do you have questions?
Is there two units?
Uh, there's an in-law apartment and the main house. The in-law apartment is where my tenant has lived for over six years. She's local, she's from Laconia. She lives here. And she came with the property.
And I'm not familiar with the ten-thirty-one. Can you?
Ten-thirty-one is a, uh, you want me to do it, or you got it?
Oh, actually, I just wanna, um, I hate to be the bearer of bad news. Um, I, I didn't, I guess I, I didn't realize that there's an ADU on the site, uh, whether it's pre-existing, non-conforming, or, or brand-new. Because there's an ADU on, on the lot, short-term lodging is prohibited.
Right.
So, uh, he could not get a special exception for an AD, for short-term lodging. Because we've specifically wrote, written into the ordinance that if there's an ADU on site, short-term lodging is strictly prohibited.
In the ADU or the main house, or both?
In, on, on the entire lot. So if there's an ADU on the lot, it, the lot is prohibited from being short, used as short-term lodging.
That takes care of that?
Right. It, it doesn't make sense to me that that would be the case, cause to my head, you'd want somebody onsite.
So you, what you could do is you could request a variance to deviate from, from that section of the ordinance.
My alternative is go to long-term renting, or, uh, either seasonal renting.
I think that would probably, uh, a long-term rental would probably be your most advantageous path a, as we specifically wrote that ordinance to prohibit.
It was simply to create a scenario, two years from now, if I wanted to move here, I didn't have to boot somebody's ass out. It didn't, but if that's the ordinance and that's the, Scott, dead meat. You didn't tell me the meeting was upstairs.
Yeah, yeah.
Would I have been first if I'd been here at six?
No.
No.
We would've made you suffer through, that's what we have to do.
So, what, what, before you, you leave, so you bought a place.
Yep.
It has an ADU and a house.
I don't know what an ADU is, but, an in-law.
It has an in-law apartment, and it has a house. Are they connected or separate?
They're, they're all part of the same building.
So your intention is, in, you're retiring in two years, you wanna move into this place, but you wanna have somebody in the home that kind of, in, maybe the-
In the main house.
In the main house, and then, once in a while, you rent out the other one, just-
No, no, the, the in-law has a long-term tenant that has been here for six-plus years.
Okay.
It was never my intent to bump, bump her out. It was, she wants to live there, she, I, I incentivized her rent to keep her.
Understood, all right. So does this even really matter? So if he has an ADU and somebody's living there, does he even need, uh, either in, uh, a, a long-term or short-term?
So, so the, the problem is, uh, if you have a single-family home and you have an accessory dwelling unit,
Yeah.
one of those has to be your primary residence.
Yeah, I got you.
So now he's already in violation of the ADU ordinance.
Yeah.
And if he's short-term lodging, he'd be in violation of that. So, uh-
I'm not, not allowed to have my tenant?
So.
That's not, yeah.
Can, see, and my problem is I can't, ten-thirty-one, I'm not allowed for two years to live there.
So when people buy a, a property and there's a in-law apartment or an accessory dwelling unit, it has to be used as, one of those units has to be used as their primary residence.
But I'm not allowed to have a primary residence?
I, I under, I understand your dilemma, but our ordinance doesn't allow any deviation from that unless you were to get a variance.
My lawyer said you cannot, if it comes to a town ordinance versus the IRS, go with the IRS.
I, I, I am sure he's absolutely, I, I am not a lawyer, but I would, I would side with a lawyer.
Right.
Um, all right, so.
So I could, I am allowed to, I could say, I'm, my primary, I, I would move, I'm planning to move to Laconia.
No.
So I could make that my primary residence and just not live there for two years.
I, I see where you're, I, I think what you could do, um, all right, so this is like, super complex, and I'm gonna have to job this out on the spot. Um, let me look at some options.
While you're looking, Rob, just one thing. So the reason why we are so specific about these short-term rentals is because you would not believe how creative people can get to work around the rules and the requirements and everything else.
I had oceanfront property on Wells Main and three building lots across the street that we never built on. Well aware of people trying to crowd, crowd in.
So that's why the, the, the rules are written, and they're not perfect. I mean, we're, we're in iterations here, so. And so we're, we're just trying to create a solution that might work for you, that's all.
So I, I think your best option would be to, you would need to come back to the zoning board, and you need to request a variance for density, and you need to request a variance for a two-family use.
To make a two-family home.
Because then you'd have to, you would be making your, uh-
I don't know what it is now. I mean, is, is it, what, what did I purchase? Is it a two-family home?
No, so you purchased a single-family home with it, with it, with-
That's how I interpreted it, but I don't know what, what it's been listed as.
A single-family home is, uh, with an ADU, is, is, doesn't, the ADU doesn't count against your density.
Oh, okay.
You would still have your density of one, and you're in a rural residential, so your density is two units, well, one unit per two-acre lot.
Right.
So in order to deviate from that, now you would need a variance for density to allow for two units, where we would only allow one.
Yeah.
And then you need to change your use from a single-family with an ADU to an actual two-family.
Okay.
So that would make your, that, that would then make your situation legal because you don't meet the criteria now for an accessory dwelling unit.
Gotcha.
So, uh, what you, what you will need to do is, I would, I would withdraw your application, and then I would, I would submit to, to Scott the variance for density and a variance for use for a two-family.
Scott.
Are there tax implications to, to that? To that change from a single-family to a multifamily?
I do believe assessing looks at that differently when they're, when they're doing their assessment, but that makes you legal, that you, you don't have to live there, so that, that'll fix your whole other issue.
Just wanted to give him a heads up, your taxes are gonna go up.
Or, or I could, or I could leave it alone and leave it empty. Right? Is that a problem?
No, you could do that, too.
You know, make it my legal residence, but not live there.
You could rent it out a, as a, as a single-family home, as a long-term rental, and you would have zero issues, and you'd meet all of our ordinance requirements.
I'll probably just go with that.
Okay. I'm just giving you the other option if you wanted to do, do that. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't wanna rain on your parade. I, I hate doing that.
No, no.
Does your property still have a tennis court?
I'm, I'm, I'm led to believe that a tree fell on the tennis court this week, um, so I, I don't know. That's, plus there's one massive tree next to the building that, before it's all done, I gotta get that down because it would take out the whole, whole house. It's like, it's like somebody planted the sequoia next to the house, which I did not see when I purchased the site. That's a mother big tree right there, but, but, yeah, like that. But I don't know, there's what's-
My friends used to own that property, and I played tennis many times on that court.
Um, and the previous owners had the same tenant. I don't know whether you knew Lizzie, but Lizzie works here in town. Nice girl.
You can, you can keep renting it, though.
I can continue renting to her.
Yeah.
And just-
Well, to whoever it is, that's within that.
Yeah, I got, no, it, it, the appeal of it was Liz, that I would have a person on site if I wasn't allowed here. You know, I, I, it doesn't make sense to me in a town that you would rent, you would not allow someone to live in the house. Fire department wouldn't be pleased with that, you know, like, I mean, how, how much could things get out of control when nobody's there, right?
Well, so, well, the, the answer to that question is actually pretty simple. The state of New Hampshire created this thing called an ADU, an auxiliary dwelling unit, so that if you had a house and you had a family member that needed a place to stay, you could make basically a little apartment for them.
Yeah.
It wasn't created to make a separate unit that you can rent out. It was meant to create living space for close family. That's all that it was. So what has happened is people have taken advantage of that. "Oh, we've got a little apartment over here. Well, we'll rent that out on the side for five hundred bucks a month." People take advantage of that. And it may be in your, your community, nice homes down there. My question was, are there any multifamilies down there? We may not even approve a multifamily where he is.
He's not, he's gonna go for two, not multi. He won't, he's gonna go for a two-family.
Oh, a two-family, oh, yeah, okay, understood. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, understood.
Yep, two-family, uh, multifamily, once you hit the three units, that opens up a whole other can of worms.
So that's why, so that's why the rules relative to an ADU and your home has an ADU and that's all that it is.
Yeah.
So your, your kid or your grandparent could live there, but you can't rent it.
I figured she'd be there when I was old and dead.
Oh, there you go, maybe.
It was just hav- having a younger person on-site for me and a younger person on-site for the town.
Sure, sure, sure.
Just made sense.
Well, we're, we're trying to create a solution for you within the rules that we have to operate.
So Scott, can you make it so the, I see, I don't even know.
Yeah, if you come down and see me, we can figure something out.
Can I get it done now, cause I gotta drive back to Mass and get up at four AM and I got two hours of work.
Tomorrow or, uh, any, any days left this week.
Do I have your number?
I've been far, call sixty-four.
Oh, yeah. Did you see this article?
No.
Yeah, we'll, um, we'll work with you, we'll help you find a solution to get you going in the right direction.
I haven't read that.
Seasonal rental.
Very good.
Do I need approval to get put a seasonal rental in like a three-month?
So if you, if you do, if you do anything greater than fifteen days, you don't need any, anything from us.
It's March, what, thirteen?
So as long as you're doing it for, more than that. And you're all set.
So talk to Scott tomorrow, I, I think the guys can help you.
Did we define short-term as like anything less than six months?
No, we ju- we defined it by anything fifteen days or less.
So.
Really?
Yeah.
Six months, it has to be, if you, if you own it, you have to live in it, that's a six-month rule.
Cause there was a, on the, for the state statute of collecting rooms and meals tax, it was that fifteen day.
Probably if you had never said anything, nobody would've complained, it wouldn't have been, anybody, nothing.
But that's not how my brain works. I, I hear you, I hear you, we appreciate the respect.
Oh my gosh.
I hope we can help you, doctor, goodnight.
Look at all those, those bills.
We have any other business? Eric, you don't have to wait to be called on, you could chime in, you know, we, we, we're not that super formal like the council meetings. Chime in if, if.
Just wait for everybody else to say their thing.
If you have a question, a statement.
Sure.
Please, don't hesitate.
I do one hundred percent agree with you wholeheartedly that we need a master plan.
Mm-hmm. I, I'm looking at the, I looked at this this week, I went, oh, oh.
I'll preach it.
Can we close the, can we close the meeting?
I know, yeah, we should probably close the meeting.
We have more business, any more business?
No.
No.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Close the meeting.
Thank you.
We were working on a master plan, I was on the committee.
The city manager's probably tired of hearing me mention it.
It's such a.